Good morning, I am calling to order the Audit Committee meeting for Tuesday, December 12. We have a forum and I would like to start with an invocation if you will join me, please. Lauren, thank you so much for this beautiful day. Thank you for the people that are here in this room to do the county's business. Be with us as we go through this agenda, making decisions that not only affect ourselves, but our neighbors, our community, our county. We know that some of these decisions may be difficult, but please help us to make our votes in fairness and in truth. In your name we pray, amen. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which this is the nation of God. Israel, all.
Thank you. We'll dive right into the agenda first. I'd like to have approval of the minutes of the previous meeting from September 12. Very good. And approval of this agenda. I don't see any changes to the agenda for this committee meeting, correct?
Ready for your approval.
Moving forward, first we have Cherry Beckett with our fiscal year audit results summary. Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. We will get right into talking about the audit of the financial statements results. This is for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2023, and we're going to cover our required communications to you guys who are considered the body of governance, who are the receiver of the audit results. First slide that we have here, wanted to kind of clarify here. This is something that, one of the things that professional standards require that we do is maintain professional skepticism and elements of unpredictability. And part of that is when we change up the team members during the year. So, one of the new things that you will see here are Lauren Strope, this is the second year that she has served in that service partner role of the audit engagement. But April Adams and Steve Segal kind of also have switched up.
Slow down just a...
I can slow down, yes.
Some of us are old.
Okay.
I'm focused.
You'll have odd ears. I can't tell if I'm yelling or screaming, so I apologize.
Talking very fast.
Right there, I thought she was doing a great job.
I have continued to maintain being the relationship partner for the county, which means I oversee all of the services that we offer the county. But Lauren is the person who has been signing the report and is expected to do that. One person I also will point out is you see there Annie Wood, who's the senior on engagement, that purple box right there. And she's sitting right here with me here today, is a very critical team member to helping us get the audit done. All right, this is just the bullet points. These are all required communications. There's nothing, not that the county's not special, but there's nothing really special here. This is just standard audit results for the county. All right, we like to start off with the end in mind, and what the most important thing to know is that we are prepared to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements at the county for the year ended June 30, 23. We plan to issue that by Friday. So, we are in the very, very final stages of final tweaking and buttoning everything up in our documentation and sign-offs, but we've been through all of the review process on our end, both for the financial statement side and for the compliance side, which has to do with your federal funds that you receive. So, we need to issue that unmodified opinion, and in audit standards, that's a clean opinion on the financial statements there. I mentioned the single audit. That is the terminology used to cover the required procedures that we do specifically related to the federal grants that you received. The two programs you see there in that blue box, the highway planning and construction program, and then also the Corona state and local fiscal recovery funds. Those were the two programs that were tested this year. And there are 14 different compliance requirements that are required to be maintained on your end as the county, and then also tested on our end as the auditor, and we have no findings in regards to the compliance auditing there. Lots of words on this slide that I'm not going to read to you. They are from the professional standards, and it just goes into describing to you that we consider internal controls. We understand the internal controls of the county as we plan and execute the audit. We do not opine on internal controls for the audit, but we do, if we note deficiencies in internal controls, we're required to report those to you. And so, this is just describing that in kind of the professional language there. There are three buckets of control recommendations or deficiencies that we noted. One is considered a material weakness, and those, if I am in your position as the body of governance overseeing the fiscal responsibility of the county, this is something that you have to have immediate attention to if it's a material weakness. A significant deficiency would kind of be, it's a less material deficiency than a material weakness, but still is reportable and required to be reported under the standards. So, I'll tell you, we have no, either of these categories to report to you as the county in regards to internal control deficiencies there from our procedures. We do have other control recommendations that we would note and report to you. These again are not something that rise to the level of a significant deficiency or material weakness, but are best practices of what we would recommend to the county. One of these things is in regards to the financial reporting of the constitutional offices and component units. The reason that these are kind of grouped together, nearly all of this financial reporting is very decentralized, meaning they follow their own sets of internal control and financial reporting. They have their own set of books, their own set of reporting, their own set of bank racks and other internal control procedures. These are not centralized for the countywide reporting that is done. And I will say that we, this is one of the areas that we just would have recommendations for best practices. It's different for each of the different entities, and some of them, there are more recommendations than others. But certainly, one of the things that we would recommend is a continued overall risk assessment and financial reporting review of those places where there is this decentralized reporting, particularly in the constitutional offices and in those component units, like the legally separate entity there. And I believe this is the second year that we've reported this recommendation. Tell me. All right, another required communication would be, the audit language is called corrected and uncorrected misstatements. Those are the adjustments that we make or that were a part of our audit procedures. There was one item there in the water and sewer fund that was about a million dollars, and this was just simply a reclassification. It was something that kind of was placed as if it had been in service, but really it had not yet gone in service. So, we just made a reclassification to take it out of the in-service assets and pull it back into construction in progress and pull apart that depreciation. It was just one of the things that, and you can see there, $28,000 is the amount clearly, not material, but still, because that reclass was over a million dollars, it's something that was required to be a part of this presentation. Also, Development Authority, this again is a component unit, and we had to make a $36,000 entry to roll forward fund balance. What that means is that some of the adjustments that had been made in the prior year in the audit had not gotten reflected in the internal books of the Development Authority there. And so, because the standalone separate units have a different materiality calculations, $36,000 is not something that's material to the overall county, but when you look at it just compared to those standalone component units, that Development Authority, it is material at that level. So, those two reported items there. No uncorrected misstatements, no other immaterial items to bring to your attention. All right, these next few slides are going to cover, again, a lot of the required communications as a part of audit results. Bring into your attentions what we call the different qualitative aspects here. We're going to talk about related party transactions, significant unusual transactions, significant estimates, and then key financial disclosures to bring to your attention. On this slide, I will point out that middle paragraph there is something that points to what's called GASV 96. This is related to a new accounting pronouncement that was incorporated by your management into the statements for this year. While it did add a fair number of disclosures and a fair number of adjustments, really was hardly material, not big dollars hardly at all. I think it was even less than half a million dollars for the implementation of that new standard, nowhere near like the lease standard that we had last year there. But your management did incorporate that into the financial statements this year as regard. What you see here is a list about related party transactions. I'll remind you, in accounting world, related party transactions are defined as entities or individuals that are related to other things that you guys control, because you guys are the body of governance for the county, so individually. But then also where you have overlap in board members or overlap in those types of affiliated relationships there. And so, again, there's nothing that is ever wrong about any of these things. We didn't detect any unusual circumstances in regard to anything. It's just a matter of, if we'd had difficulties, I would bring that to your attention. But everything was, nothing unusual to do with any related party transactions. Significant and unusual transactions is the way that professional standards talk about bringing to your attention. And we had no significant and unusual transactions to report to you as a part of our audit. Estimates. So, professional standards require us to bring to your attention where in your financial statements are considered to be significant estimates. The reason that we bring it to your attention is because this is audited in a different way. All of the estimates in the statements require management judgment. They require a lot of assumptions. And it's not like cutting a check where we can go and look at an invoice and see exactly that dollar amount agreed to what got recorded. Okay, so that's why they're audited differently. We have to test the assumptions, test the judgments. Your management also uses specialists, like for example actuaries, to be able to help guide them on how to rely on those estimates to be recorded. So, what you see here is a long list of the estimates that are included in the financial statements. Allowance for doubtful accounts, how much are uncollectible, you know, how many of your bad debt, your receivables are going to go bad? That's based on history. Depreciation expenses, how long is your equipment or your property going to benefit you? How many years are we going to depreciate those assets? That's an estimate. Investments. So, your investment portfolio are also based on estimates. You know, you rely on your your investment holders to tell you what those estimates was still. They're all based on estimates there. OPEB, that is your other post-employment benefits assumptions. So, that is also some of the actuarial reports that you have. That and the pension, those are two future obligations for your current employees that are benefits that are promised to them, and you are required to record those benefits and in those expenses today based on those estimates there. Compensated annunciations, that's your PTO accruals, the paid time off that your people have earned today, that you're going to pay them in the future. Again, it's based on estimates of how much time they're going to take off of what they've earned. The landfill obligations, there was an adjustment to that in this year based on some new information that came. This is based on future costs of the landfill, which is closed. So, you've already brought all the stuff in, and so it's just that future obligation of continuing to maintain that landfill obligation there. Again, a lot of assessments, a lot of estimates and assumptions in that calculation. And then your self-insurance, much of your insurance claims are self-insured. You have claims that have been submitted that have not yet been settled, and a lot of estimates are baked into that as to you have to record how much you believe you're going to, you know, project out based on what's been incurred, not what's based on what's been paid to date, as well as then the imputed interest rates. So, this is based on the interest rates on those lease obligations that again are estimates made by your management. So, lots of complexities in the financial statements. We just audit those differently. It's just required to bring those to your attention. This is a statement that we do believe that your financial statements are clear and concise in the 200 pages. One of the cornerstones of the auditing profession is maintaining our independence. And so, it is important and part of what we do to bring to your attention the non-attest services that we provide for the county. You'll see a listing of those there. The data collection form, that is the form that is submitted for your federal grants. It's an annual form submitted. It's just filling out a form, think about it kind of like a tax return for your federal grants that's submitted. The component, your management prepares the countywide financial statements and footnotes, but some of those component units and those agency funds, which are the constitutional offices, we compile a lot of that information that your management brings into the set of annual financial statements. Assistance with some of the calculations of those leases, that SIB does, that's those subscription-based agreements that I mentioned, that GASV 96, that's the new, there's some calculations going in there that we help with just the math, if you will, on those calculations. And then again, looking at some different assessments on the grant cycles. But at the end of the day, we have safeguarded that independence. We are not making any management decisions. Your management is overseeing those services. There are people that are taking responsibility for the services that we are providing there, so we can have adequately maintained our independence. And if we were aware of any other circumstances that did question that, we would bring that to your attention. And I'm done. Oh no, there's a couple of more slides. So, there's a couple more slides that if we had come, had any difficulties getting the audit done, working with your management or disagreements, we would bring that to your attention. If we had had any matters that caused us going concern issues, meaning the county or any parts of the county, we're not going to be here. We're not fiscally sound enough to kind of sustain for a year, I would bring that to your attention. If there were any consultation with other independent auditors that your management were having conversations, basically comparing our audit opinion to another audit opinion, I'm required to bring that to your attention if I were aware of that, but I'm not aware of that. And if there were any other significant or findings or any issues in regards to if we had noted fraud or illegal acts, we would bring that to your attention. But we have none of those items to bring to your attention. And I have a couple of slides that have a lot of words on that, but that's basically what it says, that we have none of that to bring to your attention. So, anyway.
That's very good. And to find, of all the transactions this county does in a year, and for you not to find, but just tiny specks of things to bring up, that speaks a lot to our folks and Leigh Anne and everybody who worked so hard to make sure everything gets done correctly.
I'm just depending upon the two accountants.
We were getting it. I was just thinking, talk faster Bonnie. Doug's like, wait.
I need clip notes.
Clip notes are a thumbs up.
I do have one question. On the decentralized reporting for the constitutional offices and component units, the item that you said this was the second year you brought that up, what would help with that? What are your suggestions on that?
So, from the highest level suggestion is what I would recommend is what we call an overall financial statement risk assessment. Okay, going in and saying, okay, and whole overall internal controls assessment, basically start to finish, have a consultant come in and say, okay, how do you do things today? What is, what are, kind of get a better, a deeper, a more detailed understanding than what we do for the audit? So, really figure out what is working for their business needs and how can their individual business needs on a day-to-day reporting basis also meet year-end financial reporting business needs on an ongoing basis? We're having to come in at the end of the year and basically take the whole year's work transactions and compile them in the format to edit as a part of the audit.
Okay.
So, there are things that could be done during the year that would help accumulate that information in the year-end reporting format on an ongoing basis so that it would not have to all be done at one time at the end of the year.
For example, quarterly or something like that.
Quarterly, monthly, whatever, you know. So, I'm not saying that things aren't happening like reconciliations are happening, all that kind of stuff. So, the basic internal controls of making sure that the bank accounts are right and all that kind of stuff, all that stuff is happening. It's just not happening in such a way that it can be reported out in a financial reporting best practices to be able to pull into the audit.
Because you did note that you assisted in the prep of the financial statements, but it sounds like you're doing that at the end of the year.
Correct. That's exactly right.
Other questions?
Thank you so much. Thank you for being with us today.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank Bonnie. All right. And our next report is from SME. Mr. Rick Evans is with us today.
Bonnie, you're stuck with me this morning.
Where's John? Where's your sidekick?
John is under the weather today. Actually, the audit business is getting tough. I had to wheel him out from the second floor yesterday to his car, his wife waiting. I think he had vertigo.
Oh.
Get out of the chair. So, I'm here with you this morning.
Hopefully as a result of auditing the county.
I will speak slower, but go fast. Is that okay Doug?
Perfect.
So, we have two reports in front of you this morning. The first report is on human resources, and what I'll do is just hit the highlights, some of our takeaways from going through the office. And if you look at page three, you'll see that we had no exceptions in our observation of their internal control policies and procedures. They were following all that were set forth for them, and we felt like policies and procedures were in order. A little different from what the external audit, what we're really, we're doing a more granular look when we go in internal audit and look more at policies and procedures. Tells on a day-to-day, what they're doing on a day-to-day basis. Just for a clear understanding, our objective is not to issue a report on your financial statements. It's more to tell you, are the proper internal controls in place and are they following them within this department? And our goal is to hit each department on a three-year cycle. We talked a little bit later this morning about, you know, this is our first time to do the PAC. I don't know if you would want us to maybe look at that again, since it's new. We made a couple of recommendations there, but might, we might want to do that more often, three-year cycle, because they are new. But anyway, let me, let me go back to HR. My hat is off to HR because the job be really difficult as commissioner. That HR department was not doing their job. And the fact that they, every Monday, have an orientation session that tells you what's going on, hiring leasing employees and hiring employees. Our objective there was to look at a lot of the policies and procedures. What's in the files? Are they documenting properly? When a new employee comes onboard, are they documenting properly when there's an exit of an employee? You know, are they communicating properly the employee benefits that are available? Are those being handled in a proper manner, and is it in the file? So, I think we chose probably 15 active employees, five retired employees, looked to make sure that all those documents were in the file, proper exit interviews when someone was leaving the county. We found no implications from those policies and procedures. Felt like that the policies set forth were in good order. That's really my takeaway from HR. Any questions about HR, anything you'd want us to look at in particular?
On the accountant, the last one Doug, we're looking at you.
I just, no, I stayed at a Holiday Inn.
All right, having no questions on that one, let's move on to the PAC.
Okay. So, if you go to page three in the report, you'll see that there were a couple of items that we noted. That very first item of the 16 event rentals we tested, one licensing agreement that could not be located. And there were two licensing agreements where they were not initialed properly by the licensee to acknowledge information that was in the contract. Moving on down, under the purchase requisitions, did have one finding where there were two expenditures for stagehand labor above that $24,999 amount, where there were not bids received that is according to policy. Although we made that point, management says they're working on coming to you to approve. It's already been done. Okay, so you have a single source provider, so they don't have to go through that bid process every time they need to hire stagehands for a big production. You know, just looking at the, my takeaway is from looking at performing arts was, there's a lot of things going on within that facility. There's concessions, there's box office, there's special events. So, it's not just a rental for performers where there's someone that's an agent bringing that to the pack. So, there's a lot of activity going on. We tried to look at all those different type activities, make sure they were reconciling their reports with Ticketmaster and those kind of things. So, those were the only items that we found to be lacking in sense that we looked at. So, as I said earlier, if this is something, since this is relatively new, hopefully we'll grow more lights with nights with the lights on than the lights off. We may want to revisit that in a year rather than waiting three years to look at the PAC again. So, if that is your desire, we'll put this back on the schedule, maybe another year.
I would add that most of the findings, I went through it, most of those findings were not place blame or anything, but were pretty gosh, small arriving. So, the fixes have been put in place. I think it would be a good idea next year or so to see if those actions are...
Regular then.
Yeah.
Well, they're... Three-year cycle.
Yes, sir. And I think...
And outside vendors.
Absolutely.
Body selling of all of that merchandise. Hold all of that.
Well, it is for a relatively small group. In fact, Ms. Reese, I had a recent discussion where we may need to make some modifications, peculiar to the PAC because of what they are and not able to do within compliance.
Expect the volume of shows?
Absolutely.
Or in the last...
They did five, five back-to-back.
Let's, let's think about, we circle back to this one, like y'all said, not wait three years, maybe early 2025. That acceptable? Too soon, not soon enough?
And just, I think, remember too, that we're monitoring that. So, Ms. Reese is monitoring this. Kendy and I are monitoring this as well. So, I mean, to have the auditors come in, I certainly think that's applicable, but we're looking at all these financials ourselves as well. So, there are management controls in place. You know, it's not just, they're not just selling and bringing in money with no oversight.
And the things that he found weren't, you know, this is going to crumble because of these items. But it is something good that we can say that we are due diligence and went back and checked it with our external auditors.
Somebody's not on top of it, up on top of it, or missing, or he accepts.
Yeah.
Car inventory is a difficult matter to chase.
Yes.
Yeah.
And also the settlements, that's an interesting process at the end of a show. And so, with our experience with other facilities like this through Georgia, we'll see best practices and make recommendations as we see them, but nothing material, but just things to pay attention to. And since it's a new, new event center for the county, I think it warrants maybe another look.
Early 2025, let's pencil that in to a year back, a little over a year. Yes.
So, we've actually assigned that, we've assigned that task now to Katie Case and our assistant general manager over there. She's taken that forward. She's had some meetings with the folks downtown. We're in the process of curating materials to be able to put in there. We're also looking at the possibility of doing some rotating art shows and stuff like that. So, the idea was that first of the year, we would try to get that museum up and running more like a museum. I will say, I know that is the intent, and we need it for that, but that room has gotten a tremendous amount of use, which, we're going to be talking about this later on, but... Which, we're gonna be talking about this later on, but um, we have the, the uh, Performing Arts Center Support Facility on the next SLOST. But until we get that building built, we really have no room for storage. We really have not a lot of room for um, events and stuff like that. So that facility will do that, but it's several years down the line. But we're, we're not not doing the museum. We, we are in the process of actively curating items for that.
Part of what voted on.
Sure.
Whole facility.
Yep.
Working on it. The uh, other questions regarding the PAC? So.
How much we have coming up in the next?
Yeah, we have um, fleet management, uh, field work is completed. We're working on the reporting and review process. Lodging tax, uh, we're underway with that.
Are you getting good cooperation from our hoteliers?
I haven't heard opposite of that. So sometimes we run into little issues and then we'll call and get a little more backup to get what we need.
You need help getting the information?
Uh, risk management, field work is in process. Uh, rental facilities, looking at those at Savannah Rapids Exhibition Center. And then upcoming on the rotation is senior cities, uh, senior center, public transit, emergency management code compliance. So uh, within our cycle, we'll make sure we put the PAC back in. Maybe for late twenty-four or early twenty-five.
Y'all have any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Audit updates, is there any uh, any commissioner general comment, any public participation? None, we are going to adjourn and come back in ninety seconds for M.I.S. Thank you. Management and Internal Services Committee meeting, it is nine oh four, I'm calling it to order. We have already prayed and pledged and um, we need to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. We're gonna approve the minutes of the previous meeting and we have a quorum with three people seated right here. Um, the agenda, we do have one item to add to the agenda. I two, A one that we will add um, going down through here. Nothing on consent. The debate agenda starts with um, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First item we have is, is a request for a new victim's advocate assist, administrative assistant position. Our district attorney would like to create this position uh, with an hourly salary of twenty dollars and forty-seven cents. Also has a cell phone allowance. This is a county position, but it's gonna be fully funded using the five percent funds. Uh, the district attorney does have the five percent funds and our district attorney has been very frugal with those funds and has, has built up um, a little bit of a, of a fund balance there to be able to cover this. So staff recommends the approval of the new victim's advocate administrative assistant position going to affect December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Is it a contract position that ends at a certain date or?
This is a, this is an ongoing position, but it'll be ongoing using the five percent funds.
The five percent funds?
Uh, so I believe the district attorney walked out, but basically what this is, is every violation in the state, in the court, there is a five percent of the, of the fine goes towards victim assistance. And then that money is uh, split up between the district attorneys around the state. There was a question about Mr. District Attorney, there's a question about the, the source of the five percent funds. I know there's a state law that allows you to have those.
I apologize, Sheriff Cole.
Does have a gun, a badge in her jails.
He does.
But you told him that we were waiting, so you came directly in.
Yeah, right.
So five percent add-ons to fines are restricted for use to support victim advocates. They may only be used supporting the statutory requirements that my office has. Provide information and support. Equipment, it can be office space, it can be personnel, but only for those purposes.
And this is a, this is a permanent, full-time position?
That is correct. And so when we took over in uh, July of twenty-one, Hubbert was bare five percent monies. Those are again, add-ons, fines. We've not uh, spent a dime of them, let it accrue. And every month since we took over, produced enough, posits into that account much, much, much more than this. But have not touched it. Looking regionally at other offices, I've found no DA's office that has clerical support for their victim advocates. We have three victim advocates, one paid for by the county, one paid for by the state, one paid for by RPA grant money.
Wait though, isn't it?
At the end of twenty-four. Yes, sir. It has been my intent to ask the commission, let me keep that advocate at the end of the grant cycle and to pay for it out of three percent money. I still intend to do that. If my numbers keep the way they're keeping. The lowest month would exceed the requirements, salary plus benefits for that victim advocate. This new secretarial position, still have an, have an overage.
Are these funds only for the DA's office to use? Or are we gonna have maybe a superior court judge come back and say, hey, we want one too, we wanna dip into? Are these only for your office?
That is correct. I have a uh, good feeling that by county permitting Reese to guard those funds for me, nobody will be looting the treasury. The uh.
Arrest them or charge them if they did.
And let, let me tell you why I thought about this. So I looked regionally, I've not done a statewide study, but I looked regionally and there's no office that has secretarial support for their victim advocates. When their victim advocates get busy, they just hire another one. Those are credentialed, usually with advanced college degrees. You don't get them at the same price point, good clerical employee. But I assess that about a third of what each one of those victim advocates is doing is clerical in nature. Sending form letters, making phone calls. I think I can kick the can down the road multiple years from having to add another victim advocate at that price point by bringing in a secretary. With the addition of this new secretarial position, permit me to do it, budget neutral. But we will still be, your DA's office will still be seventeen positions below what the state said we needed. And eighteen positions below what every other litigant opposed to the circuit split. I am fully resourced, we are doing great. But I think I can save us money down the road and run a little more efficiently by hiring a clerical worker rather than a.
And this position would solely exist to support those three victim advocates?
That is correct.
They're, they're not answering phones, they're not doing, you know, other, other things. It's only for that?
That position. Now they uh, I do rotate uh, bone duty incoming phone calls. All clerical workers in the office, but a significant portion of those phone calls are victims calling. So they would go to that office anyway.
Thank you.
Living.
Second.
So moved. And we have our added item um, regarding the public facilities authority. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, Madam Chair. This is a request for the, for the Board of Commissioners to request the Public Facilities Authority issue bonds on our behalf. Based on our current rate environment and the increasing cost of, of construction, we've determined that it would be good for us to start several of the tier one twenty-three to twenty-eight SLOST projects early. Historically, we have uh, put a general obligation bond in the um, in the SLOST itself. And this time, we didn't do that. We had so many projects going on that we didn't feel like it was necessary to do that. But with the advent of the Public Facilities Authority, we do have the ability to be able to now do that. I, I know this uh, Board of Committee, the City of Harlem has recently done something similar here. So what we're requesting today is that the BOC make a formal request to the Public Facilities Authority to issue up to eighty million dollars. And these will be in revenue bonds that we repaid with future SLOST proceeds. We're only looking at the identified tier one projects to qualify for the financing. And unlike a traditional general obligation bond, there's no property tax dollars used to repay this debt. Uh, the biggest reason to do this again is based on the current rate environment. We are in a situation now with the county's triple A credit rating. We can borrow money uh, at a much lower rate than our deposit rate is. So we will continue to deposit our SLOST money uh, in, into local banks at a higher percentage rate. And then uh, be able to use those additional funds to make up any shortcomings in the SLOST to make sure that we get as many SLOST projects done as we can. And then also with the increasing cost, even with taking this money in, it's gonna take us several years to build these projects out. So uh, every year we, we go out, it, it's costing more and more and more to build the same exact project. And even though we have escalation built into it, we feel like this is a, a, a good time for us to be able to take advantage of these rates. So the recommendation is, is asking the, the committee for this to the Board of Commissioners to request the Public Facilities Authority to issue these bonds not to exceed eighty million dollars.
So the bottom line is, it's not a general obligation bond, so it's not tied to property tax. Can bond the money, put it in a savings account, draw more interest than we actually will pay.
Correct.
From the bonds.
Correct.
Accelerate the projects.
That's correct.
To get ahead of some of these construction costs. Doesn't it mean that we have to borrow the entire eighty million? This um, this is written as issue up to eighty million.
Right, right. We're, we're asking up to eighty million. We've been working with bond counsel uh, to, we've identified projects and I've met with all the commissioners individually, uh, talking about the list. I believe there's seventy-three million dollars on that list. Uh, we're giving ourselves a little bit of flexibility if another project comes up. If this, if, if the Board of Commissioners decide they wanna add a project, they can do that. But we may just issue the, the seventy-three million dollars. We're, we're not asking to issue anything outside of tier one projects. Uh, we know that, that we will have the, the collections necessary to be able to cover these projects. So that, the, the request is up to eighty million dollars with the idea that we're gonna be sticking with these projects. But if the commission comes up with something else on that list, you'll be able to do that.
Move to consent.
I think this goes to debate.
It doesn't have to go to debate. I just made that recommendation, but if you wanted to put it on consent, I believe it's, it's clear. But however you wanna do that.
I would like to go to debate.
Move to debate.
Second.
Yeah.
Excellent idea business.
So moved. So this will be on the um, debate agenda for next Tuesday.
Yes.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right, that is all for our debate agenda. Do we have any legal matters? Illegal matters? Let's move into staff reports, please.
Uh, first item, as you should see, our personnel savings, uh, total savings amount to date is eight hundred and six thousand dollars. And you can also see our turnover rate as well. So you can see uh, in December, we actually had a little bit lower turnover. But our annual turnover rate is set at thirteen point seven four percent, which is pretty typical and still a little less than, than most places, I would think.
Still a lot of work for our human resources folks, constantly bringing them in and turning them out. So many, um, just like with the other audit items, as many transactions and, and, and um, documents that, that they have to handle. It's, it's amazing that there were no more errors found than there were. That's a testament to that department doing a good job. Gentlemen, do you have any comments or questions on that report? Right, next report, please.
Yes, the first report I have for you is the year-to-date budget report. This is for the month ended November thirtieth. We should be operating around forty-two percent of the budget and all funds are operating as they should be.
None, let's move on to the SLOST.
Second report is for the um, sales tax. This is for the month of October where we collected just over two point nine million. Our annualized percentage increase is one point five percent. Uh, this collection was one point three percent greater than last month and two point eight percent greater than the same month last year.
Questions? And the investment report?
Yes, the final report is the investment summary uh, for your information.
Questions? Any other reports, Ms. Reese?
That's it.
Very good. Um, that concludes our reports. Are there any commissioner or public comment? Having none. I have one executive um, session item that is a personal issue and we will forward that to the full commission for next. All right, all business for this uh, committee being done. We will adjourn and come back in three minutes.
Yeah.
Page, you have a full quorum of three today. Uh, you have before you the minutes, wish pleasure on the minutes.
Move to accept is presented.
Second.
Motion carries. Uh, any changes to the agenda, sir?
Not in my knowledge, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Uh, we'll move right into the, uh, nothing for consent. We'll move right into the debate agenda. Uh, Mr. Law.
Thank you, sir. First one I have for you, I'd like to request permission to reclassify vacant supervisor seven grade twenty-four position to Facility Management Department. Even though it was a supervisor seven grade position, it was acting more of an administrative role. So we're wanting to reclassify it to administrative coordinator grade nineteen with a cell phone allowance of one thousand four hundred and forty dollars. Recommend approval.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion carries. Next item, sir.
Next I have for you is a, a refu, a refuse service agreement with potential waste or recycling of Georgia. They have requested a change in our pricing. We've been under contract with these folks since November twenty twenty-one. Uh, back in March, county raised their tip fees at the landfill, which is the landfill that our provider uses. Uh, they've, providers come back and asked for an increase of nineteen cent per cubic yard. Our, our, our pay is based on the size of the container, so we pay based on cubic yard. They provided me all of their tip fees tipping our trucks at Richmond County landfill. We backed those tons into cubic yards and came up with this nineteen cent to cover their cost. It's about seven hundred dollars per month increase to our contract. Staff has recommended approval.
Seven hundred bucks a month.
Spreadsheets attached, we're, we're spread out all over the county. There's, some of these were picked up twice a week. Kitchen centers picked up twice a week, large ones, other places are once a week and have small ones. But it was, it was hard to do it by tonnage, cause every place is different, so it's hard in what size of the, of the out there.
This is done by change order. So for this renewal, it will be the new rate. When it comes up for renewal again, will it revert back to the original rate? Or is this the new permanent rate?
Be the new permanent rate.
Based on the increase in their costs? If for some reason the cost, their cost went down, we would be asking them for a change order to bring it back. I mean, there are things, asphalt and different construction things that go up and down. Not that I think Richmond County is going to decrease their fees, but is it the same principle going up or going down?
Right, it is. We also talked with them about if we were to remove some of the containers. Uh, fire station two, we had that container removed, so that cost actually came out. But then we turned around and added one at Bed One, which is now Station Two, which added a cost back. So we do have the ability to move these things around as things change. So yes, if, if tip fees were to go down, we'd go back and ask them to reduce the cost.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, next item, sir.
Next one, I'll ask Mr. Prather to come up and work on this one for us.
Morning. I have one item for y'all to consider this morning. Um, this is an HVAC seachiller at Savannah Rapids Pavilion. As you may remember, we uh, we came to y'all early uh, in twenty twenty-three with a uh, a compressor. Uh, we've placed some compressors here already. Killer there is original to the building, it's failing again. Has five compressors. I think we replaced two early this year and we've recently lost two more and another one's on its way. Reached out to some manufacturers and consulted with facility management and our HVAC team within the county. Uh, we got a few proposals and we got a few lead times and we decided to choose Train. So Train had one of the shortest lead times. And as you can see in your document, thirty-two to thirty-four weeks really puts us in a bind of warmer weather.
You mean in the middle of the summer when this thing gets here?
So we are working with John Luton and his team to try to come up with some ideas, but the time is, is of the essence here to, to get this thing moved. but the time is of the essence here to get this thing moving, so.
And when you say lead time, that's to get it here
Correct.
in that minute? Then how long is the installation time?
Few days.
Yeah, I don't know.
You know.
Come up with a way, just use them down there. I want to know, because that's magic.
We'll pay the bill 32 to 38 weeks.
We're actually meeting with them this week to discuss that. As you know, electrical gear, HVAC, they give you a range, and so they don't really know, nobody really knows as a guess, so we're going to put the pressure on them to know how heavily used the Rapids Pavilion is, so we're going to push this to happen quick.
And there is a chance that 34 weeks, that net, there is a?
There is a chance, yes, ma'am.
Chance it doesn't show up even then, so we'll keep.
Lived through this with Building C, with the same thing. They promised a time, and it was about, Michael, how long was it? About 18 months longer than they said?
Lost track.
But they kept giving us due dates, and they kept slipping. But we have discussed temporary cooling for the building if we need it, so we've got ideas going to make sure that John can still be up and running for the public.
We worked with procurement very closely on this. This is a sole source, that's the ability for us to. Staff does recommend approval of this, purchasing the chiller from Train, amount of $158,950.
So Train is the manufacturer, but Train Technologies is a subcontractor that will be purchasing
That's the local.
for installation and everything. Have we used Train Technologies before? We have experience with them?
Yes, ma'am. I believe Chad has.
We made sure that our HVAC team looked at these quotes. It wasn't just us in the room. We made sure that people that touch it, they went through all this, they were very happy with this.
We had a local engineer come and visit with this, on site, two or three times with us to make sure that we're doing this correctly and that the SPOLOX project of the renovation, we've taken that into consideration of how this will build out this system when we go inside and replace the other components of this.
This was in the budget for this year?
This is actually being taken, this is being used from the 2328 SPOLOX for that project, for the Savannah Rapids Pavilion.
It was planned to replace it in the SPOLOX project. We're just having to advance these portion, can't wait for the SPOLOX project.
And that was on the list for the PFA, but we can go ahead and do this, even if, while we're waiting?
Correct.
Move to consent.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Next item, alcohol license.
All right, the first item we have is alcohol beverage license for Two Boys Pizza Grill LLC. They have applied for a license, alcohol beverage license to sell beer and wine for on-premise consumption at 3851 Evans-Tolox Road, Suite 109. They have applied, provided all the required information and posted the property as of November 17th, 2023. No known opposition, and staff recommends approval of the license.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion carries. Next item, sir.
All right, next item, we have alcohol beverage license for Bel Air Real Estate LLC, doing business as Hampton Inn, Hampton Inn and Suites Augusta West. Applet has applied for an alcohol beverage license to sell beer, wine for off-premise consumption for 4,081 Jimmy Diaz Parkway. They have provided all the information, and the notice was posted on October 31st of this year. No known opposition, as staff still recommends approval as well.
So the Hampton Inn wants a license for off-premise alcohol, so are they turning it into a liquor store? What is going on? Tell me.
I'll have to.
I need help.
To Ms. Hall on that.
Individual bottles of beer and wine from their kind of convenience section, where they have the prepackaged food and things like that, so it won't be a liquor store. They'll only have beer and wine.
Okay, okay. Well, that makes a little more sense. No, I'm good. I just couldn't figure out. So that's why it's the little
Kind of weird, I don't ever remember.
Little corner market thing that the hotels have for snacks and chips and candy bars. They'll just have it in there. Okay, I can live with that. Move to consent.
Second.
Motion carries. Next item, sir.
All right, the next one we have is alcohol beverage license for Miyaka Grove Town, doing business as Miyaka and Rockin Crab. They have provided, they've requested an alcohol beverage license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits for on-premise consumption from 5184 Bluegrass Trail. They have provided all the required information, and notice was posted on December 1st of this year, and staff recommends approval at January 2nd, 24 Board of Commission meeting.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion carries. Next item, sir.
All right, the next one we have is alcohol beverage license for Evans Liquor LLC, doing business of spirits drive-through. They have applied for an alcohol beverage license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirit for off-premise consumption from 4435 Washington Road. They have provided all the necessary information and posted the property as of November 30th of this year, and this is of ownership change. Staff recommends approval of the license at January 2nd, 2024 Board of Commission meeting.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion carries. Next item, sir.
All right, the next one we have is alcohol beverage license for the 1790 Club. They're requesting alcohol beverage license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirit for on-premise consumption from 7025 Evans Town Center Boulevard, Suite 400. Applet has provided all the required information, and notice was posted on December 1st, 2023. No known opposition, and staff recommends approval.
A distant survey is not required because?
Because it falls within that area inside of that large square of Town Center.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion carries. Moving to item six.
All right, the next one we have is an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Grove Town for Fire Marshal Services. City of Grove Town, we've had in place these type services in the past. They have, we are updating that for an on, as a as-needed basis. For the Fire Marshal Services, it's not for all buildings within the county, it is for those with a higher risk category, and they have, we have spoken with the city manager out there, and we've come up with the means in a way if we could have them apply just to me directly requesting those services, maybe once a year, it may be done. Like I said, we will receive payment for the, our services rendered based on our fee schedule. Staff recommends approval of the IGA for the Fire Marshal Services.
Joe, we will at least collect as much as it costs us to provide that service.
Correct. We will, we will get what we have in our fee schedule.
Okay. And do we have enough people? Do you have enough people on your staff to cover this if they start having a lot of needs? I don't want us to get to a point where we, I don't, I don't want to not help them, but I don't want us to get to a point where we're short-staffed to get our stuff done, or we need to hire extra people just for the event that they might.
This particularly could put a strain on our staffing, but due to the fact, they have just as much as we do. We have, right now, we are just approved to, or just got approval that a guy was coming in from Florida to help us out. Hopefully, we have another position available too, if we can get someone staffed up, so.
Other positions, we just don't have anybody in?
That's correct. And it's still, you know, the staff is doing quite well at what they're doing now. However, like I said, it, reach out to do a little bit more. So that's the reason, it's on a request, and I told her, you know, if we have a long lead time before we can get there, they're just going to have to probably fill those services themselves. They have the staffing, the same staffing we do. There are some buildings that they would like additional help with due to the fact that they're, we have a lot of good knowledge based within our staff. They would like some to take advantage of that at times, help walk them through the process.
But there's not the expectation that we drop everything and put that at the top?
That is correct. Like I said,
Okay.
when they make that request, I will respond to them. We can get to it, it may be two weeks out, it may be the next day. However, we have that written in, so we can at least make that request back to them.
Very good. I agree. Move to consent.
Second.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Move on to planning service, item number one.
Yes, sir. Good morning. We have an ancillary dwelling request, 1351 Clary Cut Road on 3.82 acres. It's owned RA, and they're looking to approval for ancillary dwelling that is about 2,200 square feet in total. They do want to make sure that it's not, known that it's not intended for full-time residents, used primarily for entertaining. In part of the backup, you saw the plan of that building, not really a design for bedrooms and things of that nature. So based on all the information provided, staff is recommending approval.
Are there any comments from the neighbors?
We did not get any.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Next item?
The next item's an encroachment agreement for 858 Autobahn Way. They are looking to seek an approval for an encroachment into the drainage and utility easement for a concrete pool deck and roof drain header pipe. They will be required to convert an existing sewer inlet into a storm manhole as a result, and staff has reviewed all of their documentation and recommending approval.
Second.
Motion carries. Next item, sir.
All right, the final one I have is an easement-encroachment agreement for 1413 Nob Hill Circle. The property here is seeking an easement-encroachment for a retaining wall along the side property line between their property and the adjacent property. One thing to note is the actual wall itself, it will be outside the easement, but because of the size of the wall, the geogrid that goes with that design and construction, be the portion within the drainage and utility easement, approximately six feet of that 10-foot. So staff has reviewed all of the documentation and is recommending approval.
Move to consent.
Second.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Moving on, any legal matters, sir? Let's move on to staff reports, starting off with planning service.
Attached for your information is the November 2023 apartment workload report. Answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Next report, sir.
Also attached for your information is the October 23 Plan Review workload measurement monthly report, and answer any questions you might have about that.
Questions? All right, thank you, sir. Move on to the development services, please.
All right, the first one we have is the November 2022, 2023 Development Services monthly report, attached is a copy of that is for your patient. Question, I'd be happy to.
Questions?
No, sir.
All right, sir. Move on to the next one.
All right, the next one we have is the November 2023 Development Service Financial Report, and a copy of that is attached for your.
No questions.
No questions? Thank you, sir. Move on to the next one.
All right, the last one we have is the Temporary Event Alcohol Permit, and a copy of that list is attached for your information.
Questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Any commissioner comments or public participation comments? Okay, nothing for executive sessions. With that being said, at 9:35, we adjourn.